The major change, the elements of a cafeteria plan are in the resolution. We never say that we are going to create a cafeteria plan. That is key because that's what CalPERS recognizes. They recognize these terms, words of art, that mean to them that certain things can happen. Therefore, while we have, in the last couple of days, received some examples of these cafeteria plans, and we have clarified to the outside council where these elements were, that she had trouble finding, but they were there, they were all there. And as my understanding is, she now agrees that the resolution is legally defensible, acceptable, but thinks that it's bad form to approve it tonight, that's another issue. There are very few minor revisions to it that basically spell out the fact that there's a cafeteria plan. And there is a recommendation that we come back to the council in December with the actual cafeteria plan lined out. And the only reason to delay that is I would like to have CalPERS see it and sign off on it, just because another city has done this in the past. There is no consistency with CalPERS, and I would like to have them agree that this is an acceptable way to receive it before we can allow them to find out who's hiding behind this. Other than that, the changes are actually minor and don't change anything substantial in the document.
Well, you know, we've been talking about these kind of changes for quite some time, at least six months. Our job as council members is to spend the residents' money wisely, and that's what we keep trying to do. I am familiar with the private sector, and I have to say that at the present time, very, very few private sector jobs have employees with lifetime medical and defined benefit pensions. And therefore, even with these changes, I think our employees are being very well paid. And, you know, I think that what we are doing now is to gradually try to move, at least in my opinion, slowly, so that we will have our employees paid equivalent to the private sector, which I think is the way that should be. You know, we've had a lot of comments about, I've seen a lot of comments, including some, I believe, or maybe some, that this is some kind of rebrand for something or other, which I don't understand. We've been looking at this for a long time. If you look at what's happening in all Californian towns at the moment, many of them are going bankrupt, and many of them are going bankrupt because they can't afford pensions and health benefits. And therefore, we are trying to prevent that. We do not want this town to go bankrupt. We don't want to have to increase taxes on our people. And if we don't want to do that, we've got to keep up expenses enough. That was one of the reasons why we outsourced many employees sadly, because we couldn't afford them. I mean, it wasn't complicated. We didn't have the money. And we have saved a fairly large amount of money by that, using contact employees as we have. And frankly, our residents seem to believe they're still getting very good services. So I would say that, you know, we're doing what we think is right for the residents of Atherton, spending the money wisely, hoping to keep the town financially viable.
Yes, I do have some comments. First of all, I'd like to ask our city attorney, have the unrepresented employees seen a complete graph now of the proposed MOU and the changes that you indicated?
Well, Jerry, just to be real clear, it's not MOU. MOU is under viability as a grant only for represented groups. This is a resolution. They did, it's been made public, it's out there, it has been made public. Noah's been seen by many of the unrepresented employees because they were involved in its evolution and kept the price of its evolution over the last months. And the attorney from Sacramento, the contact with me, indicated that she was representing some of the unrepresented employees. Therefore, I think it's pretty clear that they had a copy of this. Now, have they seen the changes that are recommended today? I doubt it, although the council had it last night. I don't know if they saw it today or not. But I will also say that most of those changes are somewhat technical in nature and really don't have any substantive change to the document whatsoever, other than the effective data change which was necessary to make it work.
Okay. I'd like to kind of go into a little bit of explanation there, a little bit of background on where I'm coming from on this whole thing. I think the council as a whole has had concerns about making sure that we have long-term viability in our town's financial plan. We're heavily, we're almost completely reliant upon property taxes. We have no sales tax to speak of. We're also reliant upon parcel tax. And the rate of, one of the problems is the rate of increase in compensation costs has been much steeper than the increase in our property taxes. Compensation costs have become an increasing percentage of the total cost of town, particularly retirement, post-retirement benefits. Healthcare increases, although maybe slowed a little bit recently, are expected to decline again in 2014, according to experts, when more than thirty, another 30 million people fall under insurance plans. And there'll be a shortage of caregivers to take care of the extra people, extra demand. Pensions has been a big concern of mine in that the state's CalPERS pension fund is being run with the assumption that they're going to get a seven and a half percent return on that fund going out indefinitely. The return has been much less than that in the last several years. In fact, recently, they have set up what they call a close fund for any agency that wants to withdraw from CalPERS. And the discount rate that they are saying that has to be assumed there is 3.2%, which means if any agency wanted to withdraw from CalPERS, they'd be paying out almost immediately much greater amount of money on an annual basis. 3.2% versus the 7.5% that they are assuming, which says to be that at some point in time in the future, there's going to be a day of reckoning where CalPERS and the state of California is going to say, okay, let's be realistic about these things and get a discount rate that's, is really new. And what that'll be, we don't know. So this is, that is a concern. Over the years, the pay of public employees caught up to the private sector. I think that some would even argue that, given the retirement and healthcare packages, that in most cases, it probably is better than what you can get in the private sector Years ago, to compete with the private sector, cities began to offer greater benefits. And since accrual accounting is now being forced or being, cities are being told that they have to recognize the long-term liabilities in a crew port, it's becoming very visible. And so if the, if CalPERS were to make a sudden change in their discount rate, there was a hue and cry when it went from 7.75%, which they were, they were using for quite a while, to seven and a half percent. The unions are opposing this, decreasing this discount rate because many union members are already paying a share into this fund, and would mean that they would have to pay a greater amount if the discount rate went down. One of the problems we've had is we've pegged the, our pay scales to a seventieth percentile figure that was arrived at by putting together a group of cities that constituted a peer group. And what happened was that every time a city, let's say that was at the bottom end of their paid percentage, decided that they needed to make an adjustment, it just moved up the whole average. And so it was a built-in inflationary type of situation that has caused, caused the rise in, in, public wage and salaries go much faster than what is occurring in the private And allowing pensions to be based upon the last year's earnings, I think many of you may have written newspaper accounts, how somebody's retired from one of the agencies, and based upon the last year compensation, when they cashed out vacation and other kinds of things that added to compensation figure, they ended up with quite a windfall. And this spiking phenomenon is certainly something I don't think that we want to see maintained. And so a three-year, three-year moving average seems to be a better way to approach that. Many communities have already taken action and to deal with similar situations that we're faced with. I believe that most Atherton employees recognize that some changes need to be made. Unfortunately, we still don't have a five-year projected plan that reflects the kinds of uncertainty, or the kinds of liabilities that I've been talking about. We're supposed to have a five-year financial projection when we go to the mid-year budget, which I think is sometime in February. I think by having that, we'd have a much more clearer appreciation for the potential financial impact that these costs will have on the town if they're not changed. What I, what I would like to see when the five-year projection is put together is a sensitivity analysis whereby something like pensions, the seven and a half percent return, compare that to what it would be if it was seven percent, six point five, and so forth, so the town can see and assess what the risk might be if they continue to do their financial planning based upon what CalPERS is telling them today. Whatever we do, we should strive to be fair to our employees as to how we go about implementing these changes. At the same time, we should listen to any resident's concern as well as employees as to what's being proposed. Thank you.
One of the things that happens in the private sector is that all liabilities are reported on the balance sheet, and therefore you can see exactly where you stand from an asset liability viewpoint. In the public sector, that's not the case. And therefore, many people don't realize that we have huge, unreported liabilities that are not on the balance sheet. And then the finance committee, the estimate is that they could be as high as $20 million for things like pensions. And therefore, you know, this is another item that we have to really consider because these are liabilities, we are subject to those, and even though they're not on the balance sheet, you know, they're ours. So this is another reason for us to look very carefully at all the needs mentioned in those reports.
Well, I think that in light of what our city attorney just told us, that this resolution has not been vetted by the PERS agency with respect to the cafeteria plan, that it would be unwise for us to take action on this tonight and then have to come back in December and redo it again. It seems that we would be prudent to continue this item until December and look at it at that point. There are a number of items in this resolution that I feel are appropriate, that we can take action on. There are some items that I feel are much too aggressive. One of my colleagues says that we're doing it in a measured way. I believe that we're doing it in a very aggressive, fast-tracked way that doesn't give employees a chance to plan ahead if you have a car payment or education bills. And what some of these cuts collectively will do is, at a minimum, while it doesn't reduce salary, it increases expenses. So their net paycheck will be reduced by anywhere between $2,400 to over 20% of their paycheck. And I think that we can go through this item by item by item, but I'd like to put it on the table that a prudent thing would be to continue this until actually the city attorney has had a chance to vet this with the PERS representative and then bring it back to us in December for discussion.
Can I ask the city attorney, are you saying we can't approve this tonight?
No, you can approve it tonight. Notice that there is a provision in there that actually says it will be brought back, that cafeteria plan will be brought back in its final version in December before you renew the approval.
So if we approve it tonight, it will still can be brought back? Is that what you're saying?
That one element will be brought back next month.
All right. Well, in that case, I still think we should approve it tonight.
I have no comments, but I'd like to hear from the residents.
I'd like to hear from the residents too, but I'd simply like to emphasize a couple of things. One, we are not only trying to reach parity of some sort with the private sector, but most importantly, we're trying to reach a long-overdue parity with other jurisdictions in the area. You need to understand that these changes are not unique to the area. We are looking at $750 for a single person and $1,400, $1,400 for an individual plus one member of the family or a, a family when it's 1,700. This is not unique to other cities. The fact that many other cities have their employees pay their portion of PERS, it's unusual. Even the COF report was done, and that is the report on which we based the seventieth percentile, and we got tied into the seventieth percentile of these benchmark cities, as they were called. When that report was done, it was very unique to Atherton, that we pay the employee's portion of PERS as well as the city's portion of PERS. So the fact that we are asking employee, the unrepresented employees to pay 2% in one year, and then the following year pay an additional percent of their share of PERS, that is something that is not, it's only unusual in that they weren't paying it before. The other point is, the actuarial studies that were done when I was on the finance committee and asked that they be done for our medical and our PERS actuarial studies to show what we owe, came up with an approximate, I believe it was $12 million debt. Now, Jim says it could be as high as $20 million. We weren't even funding our PERS obligation until Jerry Gruber was our city manager, and even then, it took a lot of pushing to start funding part of our unfunded PERS liability. And then it was about $350,000 per year. And it was only this year, thanks to repeated efforts of Mayor Ritter, that we finally put it in a designated irrevocable trust so that future councils couldn't change their mind and utilize that fund. So what we are finally on the path of doing is making it so. Atherton is going down a road of fiscal responsibility. We're trying to protect you. And it doesn't mean, if you look at the salaries of the employees, that despite the fact that they might have to pay for certain of these obligations, that they are not well-paid and better paid, if you look at the grand jury report that came out of San Jose several years ago, than most employees in similar positions in the private sector.
So I agree, if your impression, Councilwoman McKeithen, is that the contribution, PERS contribution is 2% this year and another 2% next year, and then the following year, 3%, that's not how it's structured. It's structured much more aggressively and much more quickly, and that's one of my objections. I think that if we spread it out over a three-year period rather than the 18-month period, then you'd have more time to plan, and it would be, we'd still achieve our goal. And I understand that we want to achieve a goal of having employees make their PERS contribution. I'm just objecting to the fast-paced measure matter in doing it. And from what I heard, your comment is that your understanding is that 2% this year and then another 2% next year.
So I don't believe, like my colleagues, that the government section, the fringe rate on the government section will ever equal the private section because the people that have started in the programs that we have today will enjoy those programs as far as the pension plans. If they can retire at 50 or 55 at a certain rate, we cannot change that. If they've been guaranteed lifetime healthcare for them and their, for themselves and their spouses, we cannot change that. So we'll never get to where we may get 30 years. I don't think that we'll ever get to a fringe rate, which the fringe rate is the amount of extra cost that is thrown in if somebody makes $100,000 and the fringe rate is 31%. Then actually, the organization is paying $131,000 to have that employee on board. The fringe rate in the private sector is just above 30%. The fringe rate in the public sector is twice that or even more than that. Every town in California and all of our neighbors have actually actively, and some in a very drastic manner, done something to address the pension plan, the healthcare plans, and do a sharing of the healthcare programs that they have with their employees. Now, we've taken, I think, a very, we've discussed this very situation in the council for quite a number of months, and in most cases where we seem to all be in agreement that we need to do something and we need to do something now. Councilmember Carlson rightly pointed out, and Mr. Dobbie, Councilmember Dobbie also pointed out, we have a big pension issue. It's about 12 million, 12 to 13 million is what it currently is accounted for. Moody's has taken a look, thanks to a report that I got from Alan Anethoven. Moody's has taken a look at the pension plans, and they're saying, if you think it's what CalPERS is saying, you're foolish. It's two to three times that. So our pension liability, just our pension liability, could be as high as 30-some-odd million dollars. Now, we don't pay that off every day, and we don't have to pay it off at all lump sum, but we will be paying that off. Just in the last meeting, we talked about what our healthcare costs requirements are. And those of you who were at that meeting know that it's in the 7 to 9 million dollar range currently and changing based on actuarial studies and the number of employees we have. So add those numbers together, that's a big cost to this town, and so we need to do something about it. Now, we've looked at healthcare costs, and we've looked at what other towns were doing. And currently, the healthcare programs here that we have, there's a suite of them. There's a cafeteria version. You could go into a HMO type of plan, or you could go into just the private insurance type of plan. So we looked at something that would take care of the employees and their families and asked, in this plan here, we asked them to pay approximately 10% of that. Across America, the employees pay 30%. So I think 10% is very, very small compared to what other people are paying. Average person in the public, in the private sector gets like 3% to 6% contributed to his 401K if he, if he can make any contribution to that at all. Here, we have a pension plan. And Joe Nation, who was, who was an expert in looking at pension reform at Stanford, he was brought here to speak to the council of cities arranged by Mr. Carlson. He and Mr. Anethoven were kind enough to have him come speak and give us their insight. They, you know, they've indicated that, you know, this liability program is getting worse and worse and worse. And to get it paid off, many of the bond measures in, for example, the school districts are going to pay nothing more than the pension liabilities that the schools are incurred. So we need to do something, and we need to start taking some steps now, but we need to do it in a humane manner, and I believe that we've done that. We've stopped the spiking. We're putting in a second tier. We're asking people to stop the spiking. We've looked at what Menlo Park has done. You know, Menlo Park is, there's no lifetime healthcare there. They fixed that for a long time ago. If you have unused sick leave in Menlo Park, at the time you retire, you can use it to pay down your, your portion of the, of the healthcare. And they have a point system based on the number of months that are out there. Palo Alto, you may have read, last July immediately told their safety officers that they were going to pay the full portion of their employee pension costs, just like that. Mountain View's been doing this for a long time. So it's time that Atherton start doing something. I think that the steps we're taking are reasonable. I think that the steps that we're taking are not aggressive or as aggressive as our neighboring communities. But I'll also point out, we talked about our pension liability. I don't know if any of you have looked at, say, our sister city over here, Menlo Park. You know what their pension liability is? 3.6 million. Ours, as is estimated by, by PERS, 12, over 12 million. Now, how the heck is theirs 3.6 and ours is 12? It's not some fancy accounting. It's in the last four years, they've been doing something while we haven't been. And the healthcare, we've been kicking the can down the road, and it's time it stops because everybody talks about with the, with the taxes. We want to make sure that we have something for our future generations. We don't want our grandkids picking up our debts. Well, that's exactly what we've been doing here in Atherton, and that's what we continue to do if we don't start doing something now. So we've taken the steps to make sure that we've, we've put the money for our healthcare into an irrevocable trust. When we did our budget, we've also paid down some future PERS obligations so that we can loosen some money up for not only this budget year, for next budget year. That's what this council has been doing. We're taking the steps, making some cuts, and looking at how we can take the money and pay down some of that obligations and make sure it's there so it's not a future liability for the taxpayer. But we need to do a little bit more because we want our streets paved, and we want to have police officers and possibly an officer. have police officers and possibly an officer at the schools. We want to have the services that we enjoy. No one wants the services cut, but no one wants to pay, you know, people don't really want to pay more taxes. And the way that our tax structures is set up with Prop 13, and none of us can do something about that at this point in time. You know, some of our tax growth is being stifled. So we've got essentially flat taxes, flat taxing income, and we've got insatiable desires for services. So we've got to do something. And we're not putting it on the backs of the employees. I believe that this thing is humane. I believe that the outsourcing that we've done has proven to be, even though a lot of people have spoken out against it, has turned out to be something that's put the town in pretty good stead. We get regular, good comments about how well the park is looking. People comment how well we're taking care of the streets, that we're fixing the streets. So I think we're on the right track. But we need to take the next step. And I think the next step is doing a little bit of sharing and some of the cost. And even at this, we're not going to go with these changes. We're not going to, we're going to take maybe five percent off of our fringe rate, maybe. The big changes are in establishing a second tier, meaning people that are being hired after the people that are here, they're going to have a little different pension plan. That's what a second tier is. And that's what we're doing. So we're trying to put these things in place. We're trying to do what other towns are doing and you've read about in the paper. And quite honestly, we've been talking about this as a council since the beginning of the budget discussions, which by the way, started at the end of first quarter. So this isn't something we're springing on people. And the employees have been communicated with on this since mid-year. So it's not like it's a surprise to them either. And the changes that the city attorney has touched base on are minuscule. They're wording changes, as he said, they're cosmetic changes. So I'm in favor of moving forward where we are today. And we will take up, unless there's a second, the vice mayor's offer to continue it. I don't see a second. Then we'll vote into public comments.
I'd like to just respond to some of the questions.
Well, I don't want to wait until after public comments, okay? Because you already made a response to somebody else's comments.
Make sure this works, okay? Atherton Council, my name's Steve Tyler. I'm the Town Public Works Superintendent. I'd like to say that I'm here tonight to ask you that you're taking the vote on Agenda Item Number 11, which considers pretty aggressive changes to the salaries and benefits for the remaining ten permanent full-time non-representative employees, most of whom are in this room tonight. I would like you to realize that this problem isn't one that you created. And we realize that. But you know, we want you to realize too that it's not a problem we created. This is one that took place over the last couple of generations in a sharing of understanding what was best for the town and having give and take negotiations all the way through. So here we are today. I just want everyone to realize, we're not bad guys. We're just, we're just, you know, employees that come to work every day in Atherton and we're here to do our best. Speaking for the unrepresented employees, talking about the ones here with the town of Atherton tonight, I would like to say that we are with you one hundred percent as far as offering concessions that will bring the town more in line with the financial future of Atherton. As can-do employees, we've always been able to rise to the occasion for any request you have ever made of us. We want what's best for Atherton too. And we can see all the concessions you seek being made to our salaries and benefits are reality. But what we're asking for is a fair amount of restraint on your part, allowing us to work with you a little longer on a fair schedule of rollout for these concessions. The resolution was made available to us for the first time on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving in the afternoon. Some items did not look quite right. You're talking about public works superintendent, city clerks. So what we did was we sent it out to get some professional advice just to make sure everything that was in was correct. Sure enough, it was discovered that a few items, one actually in favor of the town, were improperly stated in the resolution. When we got back to work on Monday, we gave these mistakes back to the city attorney for clarification. And last night, he reissued us back a document titled Very Tentative Draft for us to consider as the final document. This morning, we asked for a final draft of the document and we received what looks like a final document, but again, it appears rushed through and incorrect. For example, if any of you have a copy of the resolution that you're about to vote on, if you'll notice on page one, it says the resolution is effective January first, 2013. But if you look at the final page of the resolution, it says it's effective October first, 2012. We're not quite sure what the council's direction is with that. Also, if you look at item number 22 in the resolution, it appears that retirees will now receive life insurance as stated under Section 22. I'm not quite sure where that's going. And these were all discovered between three and five o'clock this afternoon by somebody who's not the most due diligence detail person. I think the council should see as your staff does the flaws and try and push through this incomplete, narrowing salary and benefits resolution at this meeting. All of your unrepresented employees look forward to meeting the town's goals in addition in adopting a fair and professional resolution that the council, the residents, and all the town employees can be proud of. I respectfully request you pull this item from tonight's agenda, give us a chance to work together, clean it up, and place it on the December nineteenth meeting agenda. In the big picture...